Good morning.
Call this meeting to order, looking for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Approval of minutes from Thursday, February twentieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the second version.
I will second and Courtney, thank you for revising that. I think they read really well.
We have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from Thursday, February twentieth, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number one, region twelve, reinvestment of down payment assistance funds. You know, that mic might need to be turned on. But I think that the people in TV land, you have to hold the, you have to hold the button down for a second.
Good morning.
I.
Supported and sponsors the Carroll County DPA program since two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, there was one of the clients that moved and sold their home prior to their five year forgivable period. So that resulted in eleven thousand five hundred and thirty six dollars of recapture funds. So what we can do is there are a couple of different ways that you can utilize those funds. Still benefiting and eighty percent clientele or load of modern income clientele. So a couple of the choices that we'll talk about today is your previous program was a down payment assistance program. You can continue forward with a down payment option, or you could look at a rehab option. I'm just going to go over your two or three choices here real quickly. The first option for you would be to do something very, very similar, basically, you know, exactly what you did with the grant funds from Iowa Economic Development Authority. And that means that we would offer those funds as a down payment assistance to a client at or below eighty percent of the AMI, which is the exact funding sources that you use and are highlighted on the second page. What that entails to follow those and basically mimic, mimic your original program is we would do an inspection, we would see if any lead based paint was there, was not in such a state as it would cause an adverse effect to the homeowner. We would do the income verification and all of the down payment assistance documents, basically an exact mimic of your previous program. Those items would be a thousand dollars in administration fee and ten thousand five hundred and thirty six available for down payment assistance. We would work with our Carroll County bankers and utilize the program as such. I continue to get calls to say, where's that program? Where's that program? Don't feel that would be a hard stretch to get spent in the next few months.
You think that would all go to one person or could that be possibly two different?
You could do two, but with the prices of homes for this eighty percent AMI, where we used to see homes being purchased from sixty to ninety thousand, if I see those numbers, I am terrified of what state that home is in.
Okay.
They're really ranging from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. Ten thousand dollars would get them pretty close to their ten percent down.
That's right.
Almost eliminating their PMI. Sets them up in a better going forward, but you would be your choice if you chose to do, flip that into two. Another option would be to submit the funds to the housing trust fund at region twelve. We have five annual meetings where we can approve what is called a NACH application. What that does is you submit your recapture funds to the housing trust fund for an application that would be approved at our September board meeting. And in return, if approved, which I, so far, all city and county money recapture from these events hasn't approved, it would be a dollar for dollar match. So now you're eleven thousand five thirty six, twenty three oh seventy two. Another thing is that those go by a different LMI factor. And those are highlighted on the second page. Those funds have an assistance plan that the thirty percent mark, anything below the thirty percent mark is all branched. Anything below the fifty percent mark is a half grand, half two percent loan. So we're basically getting fifty cents on the dollar, pretty good deal still. And anything below eighty percent is a four percent loan. So if you choose to go that way and you want to continue using the down payment assistance, it will more than likely end up being a loan to that person in lieu of a grant. You could also go the housing trust fund route and utilize the funds when we have programs. We get a lot of people in that grant below thirty percent and thirty to fifty percent. We currently have a three year waitlist for rehabilitation in Carroll County. Well, those are kind of your three basic options that you could utilize, kind of a one and done mimic your other program, you're done. Or go through the housing trust fund application and look at either doing down payment assistance or rehab. And understand that the funding sources are different in which path you choose for your engine.
Basically, somebody did.
Get to decide how it helps somebody.
Right. So basically, the, the money is a refund from somebody who didn't live in the house for the full five years.
Correct. As you know, each one was based off twenty percent per year.
Gotcha. Okay.
And she met a man who had married and everything.
And moved on and up.
Moved on and up. Yeah. So again, the program did what it was supposed to do.
Yeah.
And now you have some funds to do something else with, so.
So we have three options. I like it if you're still getting calls for people that want the down payment assistance as this was originally loaned. You say you do get calls for that, but there's no money in that.
Correct.
And that probably be clean this up a lot quicker, wouldn't it?
They would call me up soon.
That's.
You know, I, I like the idea where you get more of that twenty three thousand, but then you're dragging it out to September. I just soon get it down.
This, well, it was originally going forward for now, payment assistance.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, I think we should put it back.
I think we should put it back in that too.
Yep.
We need, wow, we need a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to that thing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second to put it back into the down payment assistance fund, ten thousand five hundred and thirty six dollars.
Plus a thousand administration.
Plus the thousand administration.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to amend the budget to include that as an expenditure because it's been several years, it's been just sitting in reserves, waiting for.
Here, here's an extra copy, yes.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Carla.
Marcus, an extra cop. Marcus, you should bring him in this week, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you, Carla.
Make sure as you. Item number two, discuss Carroll County ordinance number four, secondary roads, snow removal. We all have a copy of this. And it was dated December thirty one, nineteen eighty four. So Mike, you want to, uh, I think item number three is what we want to discuss, or do you want to discuss the whole thing?
No, item number three, yes. It's underneath or you just want me to go?
I'll just read it.
Okay.
Item number three. This is for paved roads. The truck mounted snow plows and spreaders will not normally be in operation between the hours of five P M and five A M. The trucks may be called off the road if snow and or blowing snow reduces visibility to hazardous working conditions in the professional judgment of the engineer or his delegated representative.
Yeah, so, uh, why, why this is on the agenda, um, in my eyes, we've had a lot of, uh, calls, um, from the public, uh, of complaints for getting home from five to six P M. And I, and when we look at this ordinance and you can only, our guys can work from five A M to five P M. Uh, I was looking at like, I think that we should be able to go past and make that judgment to go till six P M or seven P M. Uh, which would give the guys variance. Um, when talking to the engineer, he says most of them guys take a two hour route to, it takes two hours roughly to, um, plow or sand a route. Sanding would not take as long, plowing takes longer, I think. Um, and when a storm hits between three and five, it is almost impossible to go out. Um, in his eyes, and he has a very hard judgment to make. And not, not, um, trying to say that when he makes judgment, that's on him, it's hard to do that. Um, but I do think that this ordinance could change to six or seven and give that possibility to get the rest of the county home safe on our roads. In my eyes.
And we, uh, we do all have a copy. Does everybody have the copy with the red on it as far as what other counties do?
Uh, there's in the ninety nine counties, thirty four of them work after five P M. Twenty didn't report and forty five of them quit at five P M or sooner. There's about thirty three percent of Iowa that works after five P M.
And Zach question for you, um, is five P M a hard number or is, is, it's a reference number?
It's a reference number, um, you know. When we're dealing with snow, we can barely see it coming when, when it's getting hit and.
Do you want to come up here just so people can hear?
We'll stick around later than five o'clock on certain situations.
So it's not a mandatory where they punch the clock and leave?
They're not like, hey, be, be back by four thirty so you guys can get out here at five. That's not how it works. Um, there's times that we're out till five thirty, five forty five, possibly even six, but it all depends on when that last run starts, depending on what's going on. Snow generally isn't as much of a problem because we can see it on radar, we can see it coming, we kind of know when it's going to quit. And if there's benefits to stick around, we will just a little, for a little while. That's where it's, it's a, a reference number, I guess. Um, ice is a little bit different. I know that's one of the, one of the storms we had some calls on where it's a lot harder to see that if it's very fine, it doesn't show up on radar. Um, you, you don't, it can, it can get very slick in ten minutes' time. So that, that's a whole other animal kinda, but um, as far as the five to five, that's, if it's, it's a reference number, probably the biggest thing is I think it from a safety perspective, well, twelve hour shift is a lot. If it was a, a one day event, maybe it's, that's one thing, but generally when you have a snow event, it's not a one day event, it's a three day or four day event just because of the wind. Even if it doesn't snow anymore, we're out again at five A M the next day till five or five at night if the wind keeps blowing because it keeps causing problems for us.
So is the five to five thinking of sunrise to sunset or is it?
Generally, I mean, we're out before sunrise, but again, we're trying to get the roads cleaned up before there's a lot of traffic on it. That makes a big difference. Um, trying to get it cleaned. So I think that's one of the big things. And I would, I, I don't have any numbers to back it up, but I would think a larger percentage of the snow that's happened overnight, we're coming out for a second in the morning, doesn't see a lot of good rather more, more so than starting later and staying out later.
So, yep. Obviously, we don't have a problem and obviously we just need to change our verbiage on here if they are still work, you know, if they work till five thirty, five forty five now. Yeah, I feel, I've felt and fielded enough calls this year that this is something that, um, I wanted to address, uh. Um, we've had, we had the one bad ice storm and it's not, it's a hard judgment call to make, but, um, I feel a lot of calls that night, so. You know, and I feel the calls, um, and maybe you guys don't as much, but I, I feel the calls this last, um, snowstorm we had, um, but those guys worked all Saturday and Sunday, I believe. Um, I did talk to the state and they, they run part time guys at night. They don't run them all night long, but when the normal shift goes home, part time guys go out. For seventy one and thirty mostly, a little bit of one forty one.
How many miles differences are between us and state? I think for the public's benefit, how many miles of gravel we?
Me, pavement route, we're, I think we're roughly two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty miles, uh, from my best recollection. And state, I would assume they're supposed to ninety miles if I had to guess, if you put one forty one and haul it, maybe a little less than that.
Thirty, seventy one and one forty one.
But then we got another eight hundred plus mile of gravel as well.
I mean, I've never gotten any calls that they weren't out late at night. As much as I've had questions why they weren't out earlier in the morning, and most of those times, those questions were because of blowing like a, you know, blowing crazy, which we don't want to go out there because then we're just, we're beating our head against the wall for.
Yeah. Well, we're talking, those are service only, right?
Yeah. And that's where I got most of my, my calls that I've gotten over the years I've been a supervisor. And I will also say those calls have not been a lot of calls.
And was that on like gravel or on pavement, Gene?
Mo- mostly pavement, those are what I had. I've had a few in gravel, but not.
It, five A M's per plenty early, I think, to, to get started in the morning, but I know some people start earlier, some jobs, but overall.
I think the guys, even though you say five, I always feel like them trucks are leaving before that sometimes.
They, they do. I mean, they, I mean, Chris calls them, I'm guessing four A M to go on.
Yeah.
He's out at three. I mean, checking roads. So the nice thing is, is you can get part of that road cleaned up, at least maybe one path before you get a lot of traffic on it. I completely take benefit to that.
I know you're not going to get the perfect number here because you get storms started different times of the day and night, whatever happens. So you gotta be mindful of that.
I, I agree that where, where my situation was is you have a nice storm come at four thirty, three thirty, four, whatever that is. And we're looking at our ordinance and say, well, we can't send them out. What do you, what? Is that because our ordinance says five P M or is it because the guys are over hours? They're, they're not over hours by, by code three ninety point three, which there is no, there's an exemption for snowplow drivers. Um, but is, is it because our ordinance is, is it because safety? Is it because ordinance? Because we can't go at till six P M or wh- why, what's the verbiage there?
Again, the reason why we didn't go out for that ice storm, um, in my, in my opinion, and I had to clarify with Chris that we sent our guys home at three thirty, that's their normal quitting time. And when we looked at the radar, we looked at everything. We didn't think there's any more ice coming. We didn't think, hey, we were kind of waiting that afternoon. It was originally supposed to hit mid afternoon. Never got anything. We thought it dissipated and went away. So we made the call to send them home rather than have them stand around for, because we didn't think there was anything going to come. Well, once they're at home and now it's four thirty, it's not our normal, normal standard practice to send to, you can call them at four thirty and then what after five for sure before you get them back. Um, by the time you get out, get loaded with, with, with product, I mean, it's probably five thirty at best, and now you're out till seven thirty before we get back. So it's bad timing for a storm. Um, again, if it was snow, or you, you thought it was coming and it was going to be a, a, a wave coming through at three thirty or four o'clock or four thirty. We could see that, we'd probably stick around and try to make one run before we go in for the day. Um, but with what we have for, for, um, I guess what we saw on the radar, what we saw for, uh, towns to our south and west where there wasn't any, any precipitation falling, we made the call that, hey, we think it's not gonna, not gonna hit. That's what we were wrong. I mean, we made that judgment call and it, it started icing at four thirty and at that point, it was, it's very hard to make, to have everyone come back in, especially when they're not expecting it.
Has these situations happened very often?
The nice thing, I mean, once every two years, it seems like, I mean, it, it happens, but it's not.
It's not, it's not a norm though.
The, the snow is the, is the thing that's usually the more norm, but again, that's a lot more predictable as far as maybe not how much you're going to get, but you can see it come a lot more.
Great. So. And thank you. And like you said, this, you, this is the policy, but you do flex from that.
We, we do. I mean, it's not a hard number. We're, we're asking, hey, you gotta be at four thirty so we, you can get out the door. We're kicking you out at five. That's not the intent. Um, it, it all depends on kind of when that last run happens and how long it takes, you know, what, that's what it boils down to.
Well, and, and I can see the purpose of having the policies, it's to protect the public, it is to protect ourselves from liability and it's also to protect our people. Uh, I mean, we don't want our people, uh, running into somebody, neither to killing somebody. I mean, if you get, uh, I think that's why normally we stay away from dark, isn't that?
Yeah, I think it's probably part of the reason. I mean, it's been that way for a long time. I think the, the expectations and the normalcy of what, what you do in, so the public can know what to expect is a big thing too. If you say we're going to go out later for this storm and not for that storm, I think that causes problems as well because then people don't know, know when, what to expect from our roads.
I, I would say this, this policy has been in fact, or this ordinance has been in fact since nineteen eighty four. Um, but I feel like I had to bring this up, not only for myself, but all the people that have called me, um. I hear a lot more probably because I live in an incorporated area. I also truck and I know a lot of people that haul livestock and, um, they're out there. They don't, they don't go home at five o'clock. I mean, stuff, animals still got to go. So, um.
I don't know if you're, this is after rewrite the policy, just something that's going to cost us more money, but you got a situation like this to have them on call, pay them on call, pay for an hour? I'm just throwing that out there, guys. Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there. If we want, if there's something we want to worry about, I mean.
It's, i- i- I don't, you know, like this year, what, it would have, it would have been once or twice so far this whole year, you know, that, but I would say, well, at what point does safety cost, you know, um, getting those people home? There was three accidents on this last one, so. Tell, tell me what's, what's the, what's the value of two hours? So that's, that's why I'm here and why I'm bringing it up. So it's not, it's not a direct shot at you. I, I told you that, that the judgment on that, on that call is, is hard. I wouldn't want to do it, or Chris, whoever made that call, you know? It's just the fact that if our ordinance says that we can't go after five, you know? Maybe there's a storm that hits at three fifteen and we can send them out for two hours or three hours, you know, whatever that deal is.
But they, they will stay later. If a storm hits at three fifteen, they'll go and plow that for, until they get it all plowed and come back in, I, I, right?
We do, we do now as the, even with the policy stated that from five to five, we, we do that. We, we, we extend beyond that. It's not, like I said, it's not a dead set, five o'clock, you gotta be done situation. Um, the thing that I, I worry about, especially on multiple days, is if we extend past twelve hours, um, I think that's a, a safety concern for, for our employees and for our guys. And, and that's, no one's told me that, that's just, that's my, my feelings.
And I don't know how your guys feel. I, I didn't call around them because I don't feel like that's right. That's your, it's your, your, um, basically employees. So I don't know how they feel about hours and what they want to do. I would assume they would want some comp time, but I don't know that answer.
Well, they, they, that's available to them anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they're either use comp time or overtime, choose whatever they want to when they work hours beyond our normal working hours.
And.
We, we didn't have, we didn't have much comp time up until three weeks ago. It's the, the way the winter, but my guess is, is most of those guys got probably thirty, thirty five hours of comp time, maybe more.
From that last storm.
Last storm. So I mean, it doesn't take long, especially with the wind. Wind is our biggest nemesis. I mean, it's, that's the part that caused the issue, one of them.
Well, all forty one ordinances are out for review right now and they're due back by September. But if you have any suggested verbiage or whatever you want to change, or do you have suggested verbiage?
I, I was just thinking that, that six or seven o'clock would be, I mean, if you look at most of these, you know, on this map, it's color coordinated. You know, the ones that do have them, almost all of them are six o'clock of the thirty four counties that work after five. Not all of them, but dang near all of them. Some go to seven. It, it just gets the working person home on your verbiage from that get off at five, which is probably most of the ten thousand people.
You're saying that five is really not a hard five though.
I had to check with Chris to see like physically how many times we stayed out past five, but I mean, if it's, if it's snowing and we're in the, in the thick of it, that they're, I would think more than likely they're going to be out still. I mean, they're, they're trying to, trying to make that last run. I mean, if they start their last run at, you know, three o'clock, yeah, then they're probably back at five. If they start that last run at three thirty or three forty five, then it's probably going to be closer to six o'clock when they're done. So it's all about the timing of when they make that last run.
Okay. So I have a question. Right now, your guys are seven to three thirty, right? It's half hour lunch. Yep. So do you ever, if, if there's a, you know, storm predicted to hit at three today, you know, do you ever bring them in later? So that it would be nine to five or does that, does that ever happen? I, I don't know.
We've never done that.
Okay.
Um, again, I guess predicting when things are going to hit.
Yeah.
We generally have it.
Okay.
We, they would, they would normally just stick around an extra half hour, forty five minutes, hour, depending on when that run hit. A lot of it depends on the wind and what's going on, how hard it's snowing. That's the other part of it.
But you don't have any operators that ever tell you, I can't stay past five because ordinance number four says, okay.
No, I think they want the comp time.
Yeah, so do I.
So I guess my recommendation would be we can change that to six P M. Obviously, we had to have a public hearing to change any ordinance, but it's kind of a two-pronged thing here because the next sentence says, under the professional judgment of the engineer or his delegated representative. So that kind of goes back to the, you can change it past five if need be. Um, it all comes back down to that. So I don't, I don't know if it needs to change or if you, if your constituents would feel better if we changed the hour to six P M or whatever, but it's still under the discretion of Zach or Chris. Um, how that goes. And we don't expect you guys to know everything. People make mistakes every day. You, you don't, you don't know. You're not a forecast weather person.
But it says definitely the truck mounted snow plows and spreaders will not normally be in operation. So it's the same, it's saying the same thing.
Well, you can read it, you have a way, members now.
Not, not, yeah. Yeah, exactly. You know, I mean, it is, there is discretion involved in the.
And, and that's where I don't know the, the time one is saying. If you extend the time, then somebody's going to want to extend it beyond something. You're never, I think if we leave the time the way it is and if it's discretionary, there's times that they can change it. It's going to be a judgment call. Not all judgment calls are going to be made at the right decision, but at least there's some flexibility. I mean, I've always, I always thought you guys had pretty good flexibility on what you did. I mean, uh, times I've seen when you didn't go out is because the wind was blowing and you're just, you're beating your head against the wall.
And, and pavements, you know, we generally, unless we physically, it's a hundred percent zero visibility, can't see, they're generally out, even if the wind's blowing, there's the, brow roads are a little different situation. Then, then we generally try to let at least stop snowing first and then they'll go out and try to open things up. But, uh, when it comes to the paved roads, you know, when we start, when it starts sticking to the road and starts becoming slick, they're, they're out and they continue to be out until, until that five, six o'clock timeline or we get it under control, whatever's first. And then a lot of times you're making the call, we back out that next morning right away, right away that night. Sometimes you don't know. Usually you have no idea what's going to happen the next morning, so.
And you're saying most routes are two hours length, that's a pretty quick timeline to get things cleaned up pretty quick.
But again, reason, I mean, it can be a little slow more than that, a little slower than it is on if you're weighing in, depends on how slick it is, how much snow, I mean, how fast the guys are going against. And, and all the routes are a little bit different. They're relatively the same miles, but not all the same.
Sure.
Depends which way the wind's blowing from. I mean, there's lots of, lots of factors.
Well, and you have, you may have different scenarios from the north side of the county to the south side of the county.
Absolutely. That's probably.
That happens more than any time.
It used to be like, you know, you got snow, you got snow and now you go five miles away and it's a completely different app.
And which way the wind's blowing.
Any more discussion? I mean, we're not going to take any action on this. Like I say, all ordinances are out for review. So, um, and if we do change anything, we do have to do the public hearings if we change the verbiage on it. So I would think, um, we would probably get ahold of Chris Woody or if we wanted to change or reach on any of these. Any further questions?
Thanks.
Free time, Zach.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three, review, approve, safety plan change.
Okay, um, I didn't know if Jeff was going to show up this morning, but I can kind of talk you through it. So the safety committee has been meeting for a couple of months now and excuse me, Jeff Fransen and I took it upon ourselves to redo the safety plans for the courthouse on every level with the construction. Obviously, the offices changed, our maps were inadequate and they weren't up to date. So Jeff took it upon himself to update them. Um, and to give you guys a heads up, we will be doing a tornado drill, a fire drill and at some point an active shooter drill to put the safety of our employees at a high priority. The exit route currently states everybody to the front. Um, I think eventually that is going to change because we have an agreement with the city at the library and if it was a tornado drill and it was raining, you'd be able to go into the library and have everybody between these two buildings. Obviously, um, until we run these and we do protocol with each office, it's different for each individual emergency plan, but we just wanted to make you guys aware, um, of some of the changes that would like to go down. I know the first time I looked through it, um, I know just a few things, but then going forward, I mean, I think Jeff has done a phenomenal job. There's a couple typos that I'm going to have him change, the you are here part. Um, potentially changing the arrow for the board of supervisors to have us going out the south door, not going out through the garage. Um, yeah, so I'll field any questions if you guys have any. Um, yeah, so I'll field any questions if you guys have any. We also did a walkthrough a couple of times through each individual office and asked. For any um, feedback from the elected officials or staff on their, um. If they feel safe at their work, and we do, we do have quite a few staff that feel very adequately, adequately safe. But there are a few things that we would like to change in the future, and we'll be presenting that as well, but keeping in mind the budget, so we're all trying to be cost effective.
So this, this product is not finished at this point.
As of right now, no, but, so the safety committee doesn't actually have a voting power. Um. We wanted to have guidance from the board of supervisors, because those maps will eventually be put up. And, you know, this is telling employees where to go in case of an event, so it'd probably be best that the board of supervisors were on board.
So this is the first rough draft, to speak.
Ish, yeah. I mean, it's, it's just like anything else we have, but it's always a changing document.
Living doc. No, I think it's very well written, Jeff did.
Hey, yeah, Jeff.
Nice job.
I don't know, thank you, Stephanie, also.
I have no problem with it, just if there's gonna be a lot more changes in the near future, I would suggest we hold off approval.
Is, is this just fire evacuations, the math we have here?
Yes. We're gonna run drills for that as well, um, because a tornado, you would actually go down to that stairwell. And go down as far as you can. Um, active shooter, that's gonna be variable, that's a very variable situation.
Yep.
Um, if you can get out, get out. If not, we have, we'll have calls for each office.
Even your safe place, I guess.
And there's a few things that will probably add to each office, and a computer program that will probably help function instead of having these safety buttons.
Yep, okay, that was good.
We have our next safety meeting. On the seventeenth of March, so we just kind of wanted to present this to. Everybody there, they've seen it, and they wanna go ahead and approve it from the board of supervisors to keep.
So you just want approval, continue on.
Yeah, I think a verbal would be better, if it's a rough draft.
Yeah.
I have no.
I think, yeah, I think Jeff's done phenomenal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, thanks.
Item number four, approved payables of two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I was reviewing these, we've got quite a few in the medical examiner again, huh, Courtney?
It's a good thing we switched funds.
Um, does anybody know what happened with the front door repair? At the jail?
Something, the garage door, I saw the bill come through.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill, please.
One second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the claims of two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Update committee assignments and dissolve Carroll and Glidden two-mile planning and zoning, board of adjustment. So this is kind of some housekeeping after, um. Our meeting, I believe it was February third. And also on there, um, we need to add, um. To put Scott Johnson as alternate for Carroll County Joint. Nine-one-one Service Board and alternate for Carroll County Emergency Management Commission.
So this is both for Carroll and Glidden.
Yep, it's getting rid of that.
Yeah, there'll be those both those boards.
Yeah, it'll be a total of four. The Carroll County Planning and Zoning, two-mile limit, Carroll County Board of Adjustment, two-mile, City of Glidden Planning and Zoning. To board, and City of Glidden Board of Adjustment. And I'd like to say thanks to Connie Bach, John Brockelsby, John Peterson. Ron Jurgens, Jane Pedig, John Westling, for their participation over the past several years.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I need a, I'll make a motion.
And to, and to add me to the a backup remark on those two boards.
Yep, I'll make a motion to remove those four, and add Scott Johnson as backup to mark. Two boards.
A second.
It's a motion in a second to make changes, as noted, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Item number six, manure management, annual updates, Bill Sned, section four, Sheridan Township, use manure analysis. Item seven, committee report.
I can go, um. Last week, I had. Wesco. Two supervisor meetings. Fielded a couple of phone calls, and then, um, this week I have the assessor meeting today at noon. And nothing the rest of the week.
I can go. Um. This week I have a assessor meeting at noon, if I can make it, and union negotiations for the ambulance at eleven AM. And another is on schedule, thank you.
Last week, um, I talked to Zach on the DOT bid letting for the uh, resurfacing, and that was nice. It came in roughly four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars under budget, so that was great news. The engineer's estimate was four thousand one hundred and sixty, and the bids came in at three thousand six hundred ninety-eight. Um, Tuesday, G and I were at CCGP board meeting. Wednesday, I went out to Rhodes and reviewed claims. Thursday, we had our final budget workshop. Friday, ambulance discussions with Director Jamie Webker. Review the courthouse claims, set the agenda. Saturday was legislative forum at Rita Shelter House. And not a whole lot on property taxes, but more on education. This week, today at noon, conference board meeting, proposed, her proposed budget meeting, and city council meeting tonight. I'd also like to thank Courtney for sending out the detailed, um, budget, preliminary budget numbers. So next week, I could be on the agenda if we wanna add three hundred thousand dollars from lost. We have the number in front of us, or four hundred thousand or what, but I assume that's gonna be on the agenda next week, Courtney?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Hey, um, last week, uh, I was at the CCGP. Board meeting also, uh, one thing that was kind of surprised, we did have Dakota, Dakota business finance stopped dinner, and uh. They dropped off a check for five hundred thousand dollars for.
Five thousand, five hundred thousand.
Did I say? Excuse me, five thousand.
Lot of money.
Uh, five thousand dollar check, uh, for, it was a kind of a award to the. To the CCGP in regard to their five oh four loan program that's been utilized, and. So we were, uh, the other county, I can't remember, was a lot bigger, bigger d- development group that got the other.
Somewhere near Sioux City, maybe Woodbury.
Yeah, I think it was Woodbury. Okay, uh, and then, um, also then Thursday, um, had our budget meeting. Uh, Friday was at the Yes Center, um, of the Cherokee. Things are going pretty fair, good up there. Um, the numbers are down right now. Uh, we averaged five point two nine for last month. Um, we are working with some legislation. To change the way that our re- reimbursement from the state is gonna affect us. Um, then I did have a radio newspaper last week, and also I had various different phone calls in regard to budgets and a lot of other things. And also, uh, roads. Uh, this week I have a conference board here today at noon, Tuesday night I have policy council. Have start policy council on Thursday, it's new opportunities, annual meeting at three o'clock, and then at four o'clock, we have a regular board meeting.
That's it? Last week, I went to the budget meeting on Thursday, and then I met with Zach out the secondary roads on the snow ordinance on uh, Friday. This week I have newspaper, radio, uh, today, Mike and I have union salary negotiations. Uh, assessor budget, uh, hearing at at noon, if we can get out of the union salary in time. Wednesday, possibly hazmat meeting in Fort Dodge. Um, de-cap meeting, if I don't go to the hazmat meeting, and then Dalton's gonna give me a tour of some of our. Uh, facilities here in the, in the county, that's all I have for this week. I've got newspaper and radio, I don't know if I said that or not.
Courtney, did I put down Carroll City Council meetings, and I also.
Yes.
So Courtney, next week.
Yeah, just the decision on the contribution, either three or four, three and a half, three seventy-five.
Yeah, our levy's looking favorable as far as.
Yeah, what I have in the system now is three hundred.
But the tax asking would still be a little higher, yeah.
It is.
And that a lot of that, I think that's due to the new e- evaluation added to.
Yep.
So if we put three hundred thousand dollars from law into supplemental. Our tax asking growth would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars larger than last year.
Yeah, so I mean, simple math, if you put four hundred in, it'd be one twenty-five ask, additional.
Those are.
But, um, if you looked at the comparisons I gave for the three different types of property. There was no crease, no, no change on the ag and decreases on both the residential and commercial, so.
Any comments from those?
Like you've seen. Tax asking more.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, did you all get the email from me about the observer?
Yes.
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 Cause that is it, you'll, they, you need to use that one, did you get it?
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, a second, a third, a fourth, and I'll be the fifth, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, I oppose, motion carries.